I'm sure you're there, why not? Sure if you two were not either a cast worker, pipe worker.
Yeah.
You wanted to go in.
Maybe I'm dumb.
I know desire.
All of them.
No.
Very busy, though.
Oh, thank you, Dylan. I appreciate it. Uh, I'll give it about one minute. Yeah, that's.
Really?
Well, because I just got some business.
Me, right?
Is he with twenty-two? What have they?
I'm just gonna say what says it.
Yeah.
Hey, I would like to welcome everyone to the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five work session for the City of Idaho Springs. We've got four things for sure on the agenda. If time allows, I'm going to have a discussion, a short one, about the managed parking update. If time does not allow, since it is strictly informational, I will take it on under the mayor's and council section of our regular meeting. We're gonna kick it off with Sadie in the tourism grant. And Sadie, let me say that is an excellent report about this tourism grant. And also, we haven't had a brief this extensive, even on million-dollar grants. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Anything but thorough. Um, you're welcome. Hello, mayor and council and staff. Good to see you guys. Happy New Year.
Yeah, happy new year.
Um, so in your guys' packet, you got, again, a very thorough brief and update from me. Um, the Business Community Promotion Board has been hard at work. We have adopted and started to execute the forward-facing marketing plan, which is going really well so far. And the top of our mind is that we would like to apply for this grant through the Colorado Tourism Office. Um, actually, Clear Creek County Tourism, CAS, recommended that we apply for this, feeling that this is right in alignment with what we're working on right now. Um, so we did submit an LOI for that. Again, that doesn't give us any contractual anything. It's just saying.
And, and thank you. I was gonna ask you if this due tomorrow.
Yep, I already submitted it. So, and I've finished.
Interest is due tomorrow, or I thought that, um?
Uh, the twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth is the grant. The letter of interest is due by tomorrow. Not required, but I did submit a letter of interest, which is in your packet, just to kind of get the conversations going with them, um, which have started and have been very positive so far, especially that we're in partnership with Clear Creek Tourism on this and that they're in support. Um, there's some designation that we'll need to clear up around, like, does Clear Creek Tourism need to apply for it and then pledge it to the project? Um, just because they are the ones that are awarded the lodging tax. So that's where the conversations have been today with the tourism office. Nothing clear yet. We're still having more conversations and getting more clarity that if Clear Creek Tourism is in partnership and support of the grant, then that might not be a qualifier. Um, we'll have more clarity soon. But again, the LOI just has got the conversation started. We have not officially applied for the grant. We would like, of course, council's blessing on that.
Who is the actual applicant for the grant?
That's what's currently, right now, kind of being decided. It would either be the city through the Business and Community Promotion Board or Clear Creek Tourism with a pledge that it would be going to our strategic initiatives. But we haven't fully made the decision yet because they're getting back on the qualifiers. Because it's something to do with the lodging tax. Who holds the lodging tax? Um, but it does say there's exemptions when it's a partnership program, which CAS and I are meeting on Thursday to discuss as well. So, there's a little thing, a few things up in the air, but otherwise really positive conversations with them. They do feel like our project qualifies for, um, this. Uh, again, we wouldn't be asking for any more money. It would just be adding money in. And this is already budgeted, uh, projects. So, that's really good. Um, and then just kind of some updates for you guys on.
So, either way, even if it goes through Tourism Bureau, there would, there would be a match from the city.
Yes, correct.
And then the Tourism Bureau would pledge towards our business community development.
Correct.
Agenda.
Right. And that pledge from the city is something that's already budgeted towards this project anyway. So we wouldn't be asking for any additional city funds to be moved or budgeted towards this project.
We'd just get more bank for our buck.
Correct. We would just get it more bank for our buck. And if it does have to go through CAS, through tourism, again, that's part of that collaborative partnership. And then that's them pledging that money directly to these projects. Um, we'll have more clear information soon. Um, and again, council just giving, I think, in the agenda is your guys' vote officially to say yes, apply for this. Um, and we'll just keep moving forward if the city doesn't apply. And if county applies, I'll definitely keep you guys updated on that. You'll know that that's the direction if we choose to go.
And the maximum grant amount's three thousand dollars.
Match, yeah, or from the, yeah, so we could get up to a hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand, because it's order one, correct? Okay.
Yep. So, that's really helpful. Um, so, and I think we do have a really good, strong chance a project meets all of the grant requirements and more. So, I feel like we have a good chance of getting it.
I love your examples that you use for the visitor experience development. I love those. I think those are a really great direction for us to go.
Yeah, really. And, and I think as we're really talking and diving into the starting of the branding and the website development, a lot of these key points are coming up again and again and again. Making sure there's engagement, making sure there's a balance between what our residents love about us and making sure that's protected and balanced and what our visitors need to visit us correctly. Um, so that is what we have started. Uh, we have started our branding project. Um, we have had a kickoff questionnaire and are starting our workshops. The timeline for that is to have the full branding package to show you guys at some point in a work session. So you see it, um, in March and then in April have the visit Idaho Springs CO.com website up and functioning and running. Um, we're coming under budget, uh, because we're partnering together with local contractors and other local business owners who obviously have skin in the game, um, so are willing to do things for lower costs, which is awesome. Um, we have formed kind of two little subcommittees, a branding and website committee, and then an events committee. So we have a full group of engaged people working on the twenty twenty-five, um, events calendar. So that's coming together. Um, thanks to the city staff, we kind of implemented a processy within the city that when we get a special events application into the city office, I'll just be informed so that I can keep the events calendar updated, make sure if it's impacting any businesses, make sure they're communicated with. Um, if parking is going to be heavily impacted, that we have a plan. So I'll be kind of starting to make sure that's really comprehensive and we know any impacts that events might have on our community. So that's awesome. Um, but I don't, some of you guys were able to attend the two community conversations we had, uh, at the end of last year. They were very well attended.
Yeah.
And a great place for participation, really good energy, um, not very little negativity, no anger, all very collaborative conversations, um, good suggestions. We will be, the Business and Community Promotion Board will be putting out a survey here, um, probably in March to both businesses and residents to gain some more additional feedback on topics that were brought up at these conversations. Um, last thing that we're doing, um, we are hosting a media day here in Idaho Springs, um, next week. This is gonna be for, um, mainly digital and, uh, TV media sales representatives. So this is to help basically show them what we have going on and help them understand that we have a significant budget to spend and that if they want a piece of that pie, they're gonna need to come in at competitive offers. It's just a strategy to make sure that they know that we're, that they can't take advantage of us and that we're aware that we can talk to our other people and that we have all the right people at the table. So, this is designed by our PR firm to make sure that we're getting the best price for any paid marketing that we're gonna be doing in our twenty twenty-five marketing calendar, which I'm gonna be proposing to the board in February, and then you guys will see it as well. Um, this will include three paid digital media campaigns. Um, again, per your guys' instructions, steering clear from doing anything in the summer, um, focusing on spring, fall, and winter, um, and highlighting events, highlighting historic preservation, highlighting, um, all that we have to offer. Um, and this will also have a business buy-in, uh, portion. So businesses can buy in to increase the budget and expand the reach.
With your marketing campaign, do you be looking at things that give people something else to do outside of Mount Blue Sky? You know, because that is such a draw and it will not be here?
Yep, that is actually a huge point in our spring campaign, which will be the trickle before summer. It'll be the first one we're doing, and that is gonna be one of the main key conversation points. Also, that will be highlighted throughout our social media and our web presence throughout the summer. So, those are the things, I think. You guys saw the strategic forward-facing marketing plans in your packet. That's just as reference for you, um, kind of where the budget line items are falling. Um, the only thing that we've actually started, um, so far is the branding package. Everything else is kind of just moving and my contract, which is for you guys tonight.
Hey, Sadie, I'm glad, uh, in your, uh, packet, you have touched on, uh, the fact that, you know, we, we're also a hardship candidate with what's going on with the I-70 impacts and we're seeing it, you know, in our sales tax. So, I think, uh, I have every reason to believe, you know, we're gonna have a strong grant application, but all the more reason for us to be awarded more on the higher end than, than the lower just because, uh, that, that can be witness for a very long time.
Yeah, and on that note, we have made some headway with, um, Congressman Goose's office, um, regarding state impact funding that we could gain access to. Um, they need to see another decreased sales tax report before they can kind of escalate it to the next level of impacts. These impact dollars would be money that the city would receive to be directed towards supporting our local businesses through either marketing efforts or if there needs to be a direct, uh, something program. Those are still in the works. But once we, if we see, which we might, another low sales tax number, I have had multiple conversations, um, with his staff that they feel like we could then qualify for some impact funding dollars.
In the preview of coming attractions department, um, with the closure of the bike park, uh, where I'm gonna report tonight that there has been a decrease of one point five seven percent in, uh, sales. Uh, but I think it's going to be exacerbated in future reports with the bike park being closed.
I agree. And so those reports will be able to show to the state that we're seeing a heavy impact while they might be multi-layered, that it will be enough that we should be able to receive those incentive funds. And again, those are not grants. Those are just incentive funds for impacts due to infrastructure improvements that are forced upon us.
So, how, how are the ski areas doing? If they're not stopping here, but they're, are they still going skiing?
Loveland is up. So, Loveland is up, um, which, which I heard this morning in our marketing meeting. Um, I was speaking to, to Denver's representatives and they on Winter Park. They're also seeing a small uptick. However, what I am noticing is Breck and Vale, they're reporting down.
And, and Steve, uh, from Dominikers told us that last year.
Correct.
That, but also, uh, there might be a really good reason for that. Because by comparison, Loveland and Winter Park are bargains.
Exactly.
When you look at, you know, two hundred ninety-nine dollar lift limits at Vale, you think, I gotta be making it up.
Yeah, so I think that's part of the more.
Is that what it is for one day?
I, I double-checked with Steve on that, you know, and I'm, I'm not saying every single day, but yeah, most of your weekend days. Like, it's like, pick pricing.
Yeah, so I believe that we're seeing a lot of that in general. We're seeing people be more conscious for how they're spending their dollars. So, some restaurants are up where retail and the city is down, where some retailers who have more cost-effective options, they're a little bit more consistent. I think what we're seeing is in buyer trends, people being a little bit more tight with their dollar and being more choosy, like, I'm gonna either eat out or I'm gonna shop. I'm not necessarily gonna do both. I'm either gonna go ski and I'm gonna ski at a more cost-effective ski area and then I'm not gonna stop and eat out on my way home.
Got you.
So, that's, I think, what we're seeing is people being careful on how they're spending their dollars.
I think that trend is gonna continue over twenty twenty-five, too.
I agree with that statement. So I think that's really important of why we're spending these targeted marketing dollars because we can be pretty strategic because of the act, the access to AI apps that we have. We can be very strategic on who we're asking to come up here and being like, hey, maybe in twenty twenty-five, we wanna be targeting the category of people that have that expendable income. And we want to say, hey, come here, spend your dollar here.
Maybe also target people who may not have a bunch of expendable income. But what do we have in the city that people can go and do without spending any money? So they can stop and do a little shopping. They can stop to do this.
Absolutely. And that's a lot of what our, like, alternative to Mount Blue Sky messaging is coming up around really awesome day trip things that you can do right here, right from here. Have it be, have a lunch, go do this hike, have, you know, have a beer, go see this. So those are things we're definitely working on as well. We do our top three target market right of his brains is the elites, which are fifteen above expendable income, families and starters who are that category, um, and then singles and starters, which are our adventure seekers. So those are kind of the market that we're seeing that are increasing around here.
All right. Any questions for Sadie?
Thank you, guys.
Sadie, thank you very much. Excellent, excellent report. Uh, and, uh, boy, we're crossing our fingers on the grant. Um, I, I, it'd be a great shot.
That grant would be fantastic.
Yeah, would.
Uh, yeah, like I said, and, and what's really nice is it's such a quick turnaround. You know, we're gonna know mid-March if we get this grant and it's immediately executable in May.
Yeah.
So.
All right, well, thank you. And next up, we have Business and Community Promotion, uh, I'm sorry, Economic Development Resolution. Um, and Lindsay, please, come on up. Hey, it's good to see you.
You as well.
We are having two very well-done, extensive reports. Hey, it's good to see you and uh we are having two very well-done, extensive reports in a row. Uh, this one, uh you you worked your tail off on. And I would, I just wanted to point out before we get started that towards the back of this is all of the references. And for me, this was like gold because it doesn't matter if you've got uh, you know, a tourist-based economy or if you're with Gilpin County or Clear Creek County or Empire, right? We all have these these different uh things that we can mine. And and the fact that all of this is referenced throughout this report and you've got the summary in the back of all of the different um things that we can take advantage of. And, you know, the uh highlighted websites and and things. I think it's just a great tool that we can build on for years, years to come.
Yeah, I'm really excited about this document. Um, and it's intended really to be a digital document because it is an interactive PDF. So uh you can go in and click on those references. Um, every document that's cited throughout, there is a view document link, um so it can take you directly to the study that we're referencing. Um, so we're really excited about that. Um. This, this document, I realize, is nearly a hundred pages long, so it's pretty happy. And it is intended to be a living document that will change um as we figure out where we want to go. Um, it's set up to be able to write things in, um establish our goals, our top five goals for each of the uh different themes each year for the next five years. Um, so what I'm here to ask you for today, um there's another document that was included, an Economic Development Resolution um that basically is saying, and we've asked each of the counties and each municipality to approve the same resolution. We provided the language um in support of economic development and prosperity in both of our counties and also to appoint a person, a representative to a regional resilience team that we're forming um really as a result of this work. Um, we held an event last February that was very successful. We had a great turnout, over a hundred people. Um, and we went through some exercises that were facilitated by the Denver Regional Council of Governments, Dr. Cog. Um, and we went through a SOAR analysis, so strengths, opportunities, aspirations and results. So this study also includes the community input uh from that exercise um and as well as the input we received from the fun event, uh the big data dump uh that we had uh the night before. So um, not to be redundant, this is why we're here basically to say, hey, let's support economic development. And uh we hope you appreciate the document and what it's recommending. Again, this is a summary of the last ten years of studies that have been done um as well as input from our community members. So we're really excited to start taking action. Uh, we have a press release that's going out tomorrow that um will talk about this document as well as our second annual event that's coming up in February. And this is going to be held in Gilpin County this year, so we'll go back and forth each year. Um, it will be at the Teller House, the thirteenth and fourteenth of February, so the evening of the thirteenth and the morning of the fourteenth. For those in Clear Creek, we do have a room block at the Moner uh Casino. So um I'll be sending out more information to everyone about that. Um, but we're uh excited to get together with our partners in Gilpin. The morning event on the fourteenth uh will be similar to last year where we'll have our leadership uh get together and really get our hands dirty. And Dr. Cog is going to facilitate that again. So we're excited to work with them. Um, with that, I'll entertain any questions you have.
This was very thorough.
Yeah. Yeah, I I was stunned when I I saw this a few months ago for the first time and uh I couldn't believe how extensive it was.
We did receive a few comments of, hey, that suggestion really isn't feasible for our community. We're not comfortable necessarily having it in the document. So um how we responded to that is the idea is once this resilience team gets together, we will go through and pick out certain things that may not work. Um, and we'll include another section that states, okay, this is this was the community uh suggestion. This is why it's not feasible currently. So we make sure that we're following up with um with that feedback and and the facts of why it's not possible. Um, so that way, if the question comes up again, we can direct people to.
And and, you know, I'm I'm glad you brought that up because there are a few in here. And I think you did the responsible thing. You were just reporting, this is what the input is, this is what the suggestion is. But I'm going to throw one out. Not not that it's a terrible idea. It's just that there's no way. There's money right now.
Yeah.
And that would be, uh, you'll see it a a couple of different areas in this packet. Let's keep Winnebago Pass open year-round. And uh and and I'll tell you, I I'm I'm glad it's in there because, you know, ma- maybe sometime in the future. Um, but but right now, you know, we were looking at like the county was estimating something like close to half a million bucks. Um, and it just, it isn't feasible. But I think it was important that we heard that, you know, there were multiple people that that had that feeling. And and who knows, like I'm saying, maybe at some point in the future, it's, you know, uh, it's possible or technology makes it uh something.
It's a little warming, it'll work.
Yeah, whether, yeah, you know, we'll 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 have oceanfront property.
Yeah.
But I I just, I just want to pile on. You won't see some things in there. And and you might scratch your head about, I don't know, but at least, you know, i- it's out there and and we can build on.
It would be great if there was a ski area up there, if the little mini ski area was working, but I just stood up there for not. I see our search of us, we have to do more work than everyone everybody have. Absolutely.
Ready? So that'd be a joint ever with
Or Park Camp.
On the other side.
Park Camp, wait, less money than we do.
Oh, yeah, you're right, Scott, because that's like ha- half of it.
Yeah, it's right on the other side. They have less money than we do. They don't know whether they're going to be able to.
Yeah, we want to just stress that. Um, and so that comment specifically may will likely be put into a different section. So we we don't want to remove anything from the document. We just want to put it somewhere else and say, this is why we can't, because it would cost five hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, so that way, because we continuously hear kind of the same comments of, oh, how cool would it be if we did this or that? And so making sure we're transparent about why it's just not.
I think it goes a long way in this community when you give them a reason why and you still keep it on the burner, so to speak, even if it's really.
Well, because it's so that everyone is heard. It doesn't matter necessarily if
Whether your idea is great or.
Feasible.
Yeah.
It's that your idea is heard and given consideration.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
I mean, I think some of the frustration that we hear from people is because they do not feel heard.
Uh, all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they don't speak in public, but, you know.
No, but they.
She does. She's on Facebook.
I always say, leave social media and media.
Cause of media, yes.
Um, yeah. So, yeah, we're um, we're thrilled to be able to be doing this. And again, recognizing the CCDC's compat- capacity or lack thereof. Um, this is not an action item that the CCDC is saying, we're going to do this. Um, the idea is to get everyone together and um really start coordinating efforts and and maximizing our capacity as a team. Um, so we will be the convener. I've had questions of how are you guys going to pull this off? We're, we'll be the convener, similar to how Dr. Cog is with the new SEDS document, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy that was put together. We're not the subject experts on childcare or housing or broadband. Um, but we can help convene those groups together so we can all make sure that we're taking advantage of all the funding opportunities or all the different networking um and connection opportunities that can help move initiatives forward. So that's the intention um of this. We have presented, so Gilpin County has approved the resolution and appointed somebody uh or they will be appointing somebody at the next meeting. Um, Clear Creek has passed it. Um, let's see, Town of Silver Room passed it, Empire has passed it, a meeting with Central City tomorrow with their county or uh city manager. So we're, we're making good progress on on getting the word out. Again, we'll be um putting out this press release tomorrow, so you should be seeing that pop up as well. And just wanted to make sure you're able to mark your calendars for those dates in February.
So I do, oh, I'm sorry.
No, but.
I did one question. I noticed that the poverty level has risen in our county. Do um, I didn't see anything. I was looking. Do we expect that our poverty level is going to grow as our population is expected to grow? Is it going to stay in that similar rate? Because it went up to over six percent.
Yeah.
It stayed there. And I just, I mean, I'm looking at prices. We have a mountain tax for living here. I don't know that I necessarily see that getting any better.
Yeah, and I'll be interested to see. So we'll pull more data for uh now that we're in twenty twenty-five. Um, and we utilize a program called Lightcast that we're able to do an economic report, um kind of a summary for our county. But the data that I pulled in this report was done um by Colorado Macy University and they put together an economic newsletter for us. Um, and so, yeah, I I can't answer that, but I hope that it it doesn't stay. I I hope that the poverty level goes down and not up. Um.
I'd be interested, though, if that's a matter of people moving away.
Yeah, or people improving their economic situation. Yeah, exactly, exactly. So those are questions that we can definitely ask. Um, we will be doing another economic newsletter for both counties. And so we'd love to get that input and say, hey, can you focus or make sure you answer these um these questions? And we may be able to pull some of that from our Lightcast software as well.
Well, I mean, it's it's wonderful, too, that you see that our vegan, our our um median income has gone up, but with that, our poverty level increased. And so I would hate to see people not be able to live here if you don't make a certain.
Yeah.
You know, I don't want us to turn into, not picking on them, I don't want us to turn into like Aspen where you have to have a certain median income to live there.
Well, yeah, and that's a good point. And we want to see everyone's quality of life increase and um but we also want to make sure that for everyone that they're able to live in our county. And that will be something that we definitely address with the housing situation and um the Multi Jurisdictional Housing Authority is included um in our, on our team. And so I'm hoping that that we can really see some traction there.
But, you know, Lisa, I'm glad you brought that up because for obvious reasons, we're, we tend to be focused on uh Clear Creek County, even though in this document uh we really embrace uh Gilpin uh as a problem. You may have noticed the poverty it between uh Gilpin County and Clear Creek, it's either six point six or six point four. Talk about close.
Yeah.
The incomes are within like two thousand bucks. It's it's amazing. And the unemployment rate is again, like within a half a percent. It's just a fraction.
Yeah.
So I'm saying, they they have the exact precise same challenges and quality of living uh issues.
Yeah.
So they're they're probably a, just an exceptional partner. Um, and, you know, with the mountain living, they're, they're here obviously for the same reasons we are.
I wonder if those figures statewide are close, too.
Just interesting you said that. I was just poking around. I checked out Boulder County, poverty rate in Boulder County, Colorado, was eleven percent in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-three, eight point six percent of children in Boulder County didn't have.
Wow.
You're relatively close to Pitten County and Eagle County, but the front range counties are much, much higher, obviously higher.
Yeah, well, I read about eleven, eleven point five or something like that, I think.
But there's a lot of things that can go into that, like is there more affordable housing for people who are on a more limited budget?
Well, like you, you mentioned Aspen, and I think virtually the mo- most if not all of the city employees are eligible for housing. Uh, Mintern went to to that. Uh, they have several units above the post office. There, where you have to be a city employee, but it made it so they could retain people. I'm not saying everybody in Mintern, but they, they knew they they were going to have a revolving door if if they didn't do that.
Didn't do that, yeah.
Aspen, I think, is much more developed.
Is it a city in the north?
More, yeah.
City bottom?
I I believe it's city. It's uh, do you know, Minter? Well, no, uh, the, I know those, what are they, like six units above the post office?
Off the sea, that's above the town hall.
Right.
They have a housing upgrade, maybe, or.
Yeah.
Well, that that one is owned by the, built known by the town about fifteen years ago.
Okay.
Um, City of Snowmass Village kind of has a cradle-of-grave approach where you start off with apartments for people who are single. As you get older, you have a family, you get a little bigger. And then if you get to be an executive in the town, then they have like a neighborhood. So you're able to kind of go the whole time there. That's very unique.
Yeah, interesting. You don't have the space.
And Guy has experience in Minter. That's why I I turned to him for sure. I knew that that he would know, but uh uh, yeah, we're hoping to get the Multi Jurisdictional Housing Authority up and running here with with partners and and uh bring some some relief to for some.
Yeah, and that's a really good point about the poverty levels. I mean, there are so many different factors that play into that and um housing being huge. So it will be interesting to dive into some of those numbers a bit more.
So uh Lindsay, for uh, I'm going to ask if there's anyone that would like to volunteer. Uh, and of course, uh, it could even be a a staff member or just a a member of the community. But um, how often uh do you plan on meeting?
So uh, we'll be meeting quarterly. Um, at least that's what we're thinking at this point. Obviously, when we meet as a group, um, things can can be changed. Um, we are asking for each municipality and both counties to appoint someone that is either a policymaker or working closely with policymakers. Um, in an effort to really get those that are voting on things, creating those policies, making those changes um at the table, so we can have all those conversations. Um. In addition, we have spaces available for different areas like housing, childcare, broadband, transportation, mining, gaming for Gilpin, the school districts. So just so you know, there will be community members also included in this group that represent certain areas of focus um and then community at large. Um, so we will make sure that community members are included as well.
So I'm hoping to have a name for you by our uh our next council. Uh, meaning we ought to be able to take action on the twenty-seventh. Um, and certainly have found somebody.
That sounds great.
By then.
Yeah, no, that would be great. Um, we are, we were hoping to have kind of a kickoff meeting for the resilience team in January to then prepare for February. However, based on the meeting dates and and how we're progressing here, it looks like that may not happen. So it may be our kickoff meeting during the annual event. And I have, my board meeting will be next week, so so I will bounce some ideas off of my board to make a decision on that. Um, but the idea again is to introduce the the newly formed um team on uh the thirteenth and fourteenth at the Teller House.
All right, very good.
Thanks. Thank you so much. I'm happy.
Are there uh, are there any further questions? All right, Lindsay, thank you so much. Good, good, good job on this. And uh, I know it's going to pay dividends for years to come.
I hope so. This will be exciting. It's fun to do as a group.
Before I move on to the next item, I just uh would like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to be part of that economic development uh team that uh would be quarterly.
I would like to volunteer, but I don't know that I can right now.
I got you.
I would happily do it. What do you, you mean on Thursday, parties?
We don't, so the team will
I gotta ask this question.
Once they meet, we'll decide um what the best meeting date is. Um, and it could change quarterly depending on the schedules, but we haven't quite determined that yet.
We'll work something out with Jeremy, basically, the worst schedules.
Calendar on certain days of the week, it's like a child's coloring book. Other days are like reasonably wide open, most, most.
I'm I'm glad to hear uh that uh we have at least a couple of people expressing uh interest.
I actually just, I just bumped into Sally Rush today.
Oh.
And uh, we, I I've talked to her about meeting up and just learning more about all of it, too. I I I can't say yes right now either because I'm not sure that you're you're talking about, but yes, I am interested in definitely learning more. And if Jeremy or Lisa need a fill-in, I would certainly jump in to be there so that you have somebody constantly in the the council.
Let's say this then, um, we will, I mean, we'll make sure to work with everyone's schedules. So I don't anticipate we'll have a set date um until we all meet as a large group. But just know that we'll be flexible with everyone's schedule to make sure that we can get everyone together.
Is it a day? Do you guys usually meet in the day?
We, so we haven't.
Oh, you haven't yet?
Yeah, yeah. So it'll be a completely new um committee or or task.
That's a whole different conversation.
Nights or days, yeah? All right, thanks so much.
Yeah, mornings, evenings, we'll have those conversations and just make sure that we're flexible and it works for everybody.
Oh, thanks.
All right, all right. Well, thank you very much, everyone. Um, next up, I would like to uh ask Chief to join us for some uh license plate recognition uh talk. And Chief, let me say uh that was uh another very well put together uh uh explanation of uh of this uh system and uh actually, I think probably calmed some fears of Big Brother.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, appreciate it. I think we've talked about this before. I think most people are familiar with, obviously with council. So I don't need the the labor that's too long, but um I just think it's important that really in talking with with them and others that have these systems, it's important that you have really strong policies. And that those policies are followed. And so a couple of things that I put in this, just to clarify was how this is used. That we would do audits so that we would make sure that it's properly used. And if anyone's researching anything, they have to put a case number in as to what they're researching and why. So I think that's really important. Um.
It's not a research free for all.
It is not a research free for all, absolutely not. And that's similar to things, systems like our NCIC system where we, you know, you find yourself in real hot water. If uh you put Donald Trump's name in, into the system or Joe Biden's name into the system. Somebody comes knocking on your door to find out what you're doing. So uh, so yes, so I'm, I'm not sure. I think that there's, there's other things that have happened here, even re- even recently. Cases where this type of system would have really helped in our investigations. Uh, I think everyone's familiar with the recent, if you saw the recent posting with the person that ran from us. Uh, and the, the snowplow story, which seems to continue to gain traction. Uh, but had the officer not actually encountered that person, the person freely and openly admitted he was planning to come steal from business. It's here in Idaho Springs. And if we had that system in place, as soon as he would have come off the highway. But we would have been alerted to that vehicle being in our community. So um, I just thought that was interesting that he, he was so open about that I was coming.
Maybe he didn't really want to.
So, so yeah, so I, I don't know if, I mean, I'm here for questions. Uh, I do have a representative. Uh, also from the, the company that is over my shoulder on the TV. Just, she's, she's not, uh, she's, she's here, but I just wanted to have her in case there were questions that were beyond uh what I can answer.
Well, Chief, I think that was a, that was a good idea because I know when we first brought this up. Uh, there was some uh concern.
Sure.
With uh, with Flock. Um, and uh, yeah, I think it's, it's great. We can get it straight from the provider. Um, I saw in uh, in your report, for example, uh, where uh you were just alluding to the fact it's not an information free for all.
Correct.
But you, you can actually know who's logging on and how long they spent on there.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, right. And it's just like any of our systems, so even our records management system, the system that we have that has all the police reports in it. All of that has a login, so for every employee that you need to that employee. So anyone that's in those systems, you can find out what they're looking at and why they're looking at things.
Regard, just give me a scenario of how it looks for the citizen that's not doing anything wrong. Like, like, you know, just the average guy, the average Joe that's just driving into town. Let's.
So.
And if I'm, yeah, speeding or.
Uh, it doesn't capture speed. So it doesn't capture speed, so, so it wouldn't do that. It just captures an image of the back of, of the vehicle, the license plate. It quickly runs that against the NCIC, whether it's a stolen vehicle or it's connected to an Amber Alert. Or a missing elderly person or a stolen license plate. It, it's just you driving in, that information is on the system and goes away after thirty days. So there's a thirty day retention. The reason being is that some of the crimes we investigate, we're not necessarily alerted to them right away. Uh, and I'll use a few examples, specific examples. One of them is pretty disturbing. We had a, an individual that is mid thirties who brought a juvenile girl up here to a motel. This, and they uh did inappropriate things in a motel. This juvenile didn't report this crime right away. She divulged this later on to her mother that what had happened, and this was weeks later. Having that information evidentiary wise is that they had been at the hotel, but the vehicle was here. Which is, would be another layer of helping to investigate a felony crime. There's other examples where, for instance, I know that the catalytic converter thing that I referred to in here. Where we aren't alerted to those until weeks later. For instance, sometimes these are stolen from things like buses that are sitting unattended or large vehicles that are unattended. Until they're attended. And so that would again give you uh an investigative opportunity. Sometimes we know right away, the next day. Uh, but other times we've had situations where if someone hasn't gone out and started their truck for a few weeks. And now all of a sudden, uh, there's a, there's an issue. So, I mean, the, so as far as the, the regular citizen, it doesn't, there's not invasive. There's nothing tracking that person. Again, that's what I'm telling you, you have to have a case number to actually put that into the system. To, for, and have a reason. So uh, I, I can't just have a case and just say, well, I, I, I have, I have it out for Jeremy. So I'm just gonna put his license plate in here and just arbitrarily let that information out.
It's a dialogue of criminal activity of some sort, right? So it's checking against criminal activity or the things, the criteria that you thought was out, right?
It is. For instance, that same vehicle, the snowplow stop was also tied to another crime down in the metro area. So we in law enforcement, if we have a suspect vehicle that either ran from us or committed another crime. We can put the license plate, if we have that information into, into the NCIC database, which means across the United States. And it would alert the officer to that, to, to that vehicle being like a, being on the lookout for that vehicle. Or it's also tied to people that are wanted for crimes, people that have, have absconded from either parole, probation. Um, so, so if you have a vehicle, you can link that plate to people that are committing crimes.
Scott, didn't you have some dirt bikes ripped off? And were they on a trailer?
There was a U-Haul vehicle.
Oh.
There was a camera that got it, but couldn't get a license.
One of the other things that I think the council may remember is we had a crew of people coming up to our county. That there were videos or things put on Facebook. When they were carrying uh like AK forty sevens, and they were committing thefts. So oftentimes, people that are doing things like that, they're driving stolen vehicles because they're not using their own car. So the example I have is the ATM that from the Shell station that we have. Those, that, that was a really dangerous organized group. There was a stolen car sitting in front of Carlson Elementary School, which was the lookout car. There was a stolen truck that backed up to the, to the uh Shell gas station. They broke the window. They, they put a chain around the ATM, caused tens of thousands of dollars of damage, pulling the ATM out of, out of the store. Uh, again, both of those vehicles would have set off an alert. They were in our community. And our officers could have either responded or, uh, but that's another, the other issue is that, you know, that was a, a dangerous group of people. So.
Chief, do you think, it's, is this something that, or, or just uh mayor, is this something that should be discussed in a public? Um, more public situation where we alert the public, have them come in and express any concerns they might have? Or we just collectively decide for them?
I, I tell you, uh, we have the duty to represent our.
I know.
Right, our people. And I gotta tell you, uh, I think that if you look at council. Uh, politically, they go from very left to very right. And I have always felt that uh it's always just been a question of what's best.
I, I agree with you on that.
And um, even if we don't always agree, we certainly know that the person we're disagreeing with. Just passionately has a difference of opinion, you know? And uh, not to get too long winded, but I, I feel uh with that in mind, everybody has represented their boards very well. So it isn't a question of, do I like it? You know, I think what, what would the majority of my uh ward uh, uh belief, you know? And I, I can't help, and this is me personally, I'll get off the soapbox. But I believe that this is a very significant topic for our police department to solve crimes. And actually prevent crimes before they even.
It, you know, and, and I actually really strongly feel that it would be a great tool as well. And because I don't have a, the nature of a murderer or some sort of other person that's planning nefarious acts. I don't really care if you track what I do, you know? I really don't care. Um, that being said, that, that since you brought it up, there are people in town who might not, you know, vote the same way I do. That might be a little bit more concerned that it would look like we were tracking their, their whereabouts and their, and their whatnots.
Yeah, I think sometimes.
The system is doing that.
Well, I know, but it's just a perception of it, Scott. I'm not saying that it is. I think, you know, honestly, if my car's stolen and it drives north or south or east or west, it'd be nice to know that it, you know.
And, and if I may, because uh, I, I, and I'm, I'm sure Chief was probably just getting ready to bring this up. But for those people, and I, I know that we have some in the community. Um, I don't believe they represent the majority, but they may be shocked to know. We already have license plate reader technology that we deploy uh, uh here in the city, right, Chief?
We do. It's, it's in the vehicles, so it's in all of our police cars with our in-car camera systems. So uh, and again, it, it, the camera system will alert you. It, it, it makes a, a pretty unique noise. Then the officer has to look at their laptop or MDT and they can look to see what it's alerting on. And they still have to call dispatch to confirm what it is they're seeing. Because they, sometimes these systems, you can't always say that the system's gonna be a hundred percent right. Sometimes um it may read because of snow or mud.
Oh, yeah.
A versus a B, for example.
Right. So uh, so the officers have to confirm that information with dispatch. So we do have that currently, and it is also a thirty day retention in that, that system. So it's, it's, it's the same, same sort of thing. And part of that is embracing technology for when you're out on the highway and there's, you know, two thousand cars that go by you. You can certainly police, actively police that situation using that technology. That technology uh helped us uncover a uh, a, a person that had driven into Idaho Springs. He had just stolen a fairly large F three fifty and had a camper on the back of it. It was parked on Colorado Boulevard around uh Fourteenth, so, so not real far from, from here. And he was asleep in the back, so he wasn't in the camper, but he was just in the back area. And so the officer was just driving down the street. His uh system said stolen could, or could be stolen. He went back around, the guy was sleeping in the back. They were able to, to get him custody and get this probably seventy or eighty thousand dollar. Cause it was new, a new, new truck type, type system back to this person uh that was stolen out of Boulder. So that, that was a couple of months ago.
And Chief, I uh, I also appreciate the Amber Alert situation. And uh, I apologize if I have it wrong, but it's like a silver alert. I can remember, I don't know, a couple of years ago, there was an elderly lady who'd been missing for like five days or something. And uh was driving, I think, the wrong way. And uh, you know, she just didn't know what she was doing and couldn't even explain where she had been for four or five days. You know, and this is the type of thing that would help with, uh, with really uh just helping people. It's not, it's not even a crime, you know, like an Amber Alert, but just folks that, that are lost or having a, a mental uh. Uh, or a tough little time or something.
It's one of the things that I would just say, as far as the city goes, I mean, we are in a uh geographical location. That, that there's a lot that passes through, we all know, talking about the impacts of I seventy and how it affects the community. So um, I, I just, I, I think that. Using this and embracing this technology is basically like, I, in my opinion, I feel like I get to put a police officer at the two forty one exit. And a police officer at the two forty exit twenty-four seven for six thousand dollars a year. And, and uh, that's just what it, that's, that's the sense I get. Uh, that's why, you know, and I respect everybody's opinion. I, I respect everyone. If there's differing opinions, I respect that. It's not, it's not a, I've been in this for long enough to know it's, it's not, it's not personal. It's not, I understand and I appreciate that. So whatever, however, coun- council wants to proceed, you know, I, I just wanna make sure that I'm doing the best I can. For the public safety, for our community. And um, and this is definitely a tool that, that I think that we could uh see some benefits from.
Well, I'd like to open it up to council. Uh, any questions for the Flock representative that we have online or for Chief?
Uh, I do. No surprise to anyone. Um, when you say, it says a list of items to consider with developing LPR policy. Um, use of LPR should be cited in a public hearing. Is that something that we as council would determine who actually uses LPR? Who is licensed or allowed to use this? Because I really think one of my concerns, you know, one of my concerns is like if things are mistaken. But also, I think Kate brings up a good point about public perception and how are we using this? And I think it is in our best interest um to make sure that the public understands this is not going to be misused. Chuck, you can't as a city council member say, I'm really mad at Kate. I'm gonna go see what Kate's been up to. I'm mad at my neighbor. I'm gonna see what they're up to, like. I, I, I really want to make sure that that's very clear to the public.
Right. I think, I, I agree if I can, if I, Mayor, if I can answer that. So, but I don't wanna speak for that representative, but what I view is the public uh sort of notice is what we're doing right now. Uh, I mean, I, I realize that um, you know, we can set us uh another meeting and, and advertise that and ask the public to come. I'm open to that. Uh, but I, I, my interpretation is that the city or like an agency themselves. Would it just implement this without a public forum discussion? So.
Oh, no, I, I don't necessarily need a public forum because I do agree with Chuck. I think that we represent our wards. And I, I generally think if your ward is mad at you, you hear about it. Um, but more that we are very clear as a council, that if we are authorizing this, here is who uses it. Here is how it is used. I want that to be very clear. Because you know my objections to this. I worry about people who are mistaken. Um, I worry about what happens with your data. You know, the fact that you're still in the system, breaking the rules, that's still data collection. You know, that's a data collection that people don't necessarily agree to, so.
Well, it's really forever, because if you travel in and out of the city, you're essentially in the system continuously.
You have a standard of what you can share and what you can't share. This falls under those categories, right?
It does.
None of us can come and ask you for, hey, can you give us information on this case and?
No, very similar to just like NCIC, people get frustrated. Um, you know, they'll, I mean, it's. I, I don't know. I don't think I've had it since I've been here in Idaho Springs. But there's occasionally, it's just people aren't, they just don't know, they don't have the knowledge. And so they say, oh, there's this person with this license plate and they're blocking my driveway. Can you help me figure that out? It's like, what? No, I cannot give you that license plate information, um, violating um our, our policies and rules. And NCIC rules. And very similarly, this is along the same lines. This is taken very seriously. It's not um, it's not anything that's any of us thinks of lightly. And uh, but I also, like I said, I feel like there, there's a lot of cities and a lot of places. That are using this to not only catch things that have happened, but that starts to. That, that information starts to be known. I mean, I hate to say, but the criminal element, they sort of communicate and that in- information is known that, 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 that uh technology exists. And so what I would hope is that in the future, that might lower some of the crimes that we see.
So that, that's a good question though, that you, you led to. Um, let's just say that it does become known that Idaho Springs is being protected by this extra layer. If you will. And what can a criminal do to like uh?
Maybe that.
Well, yeah, take that out of the, out of the, you know, for one night, I'm gonna make sure the cameras don't record me.
Sure. Well, they have to break the law. They'd have to cover their license plate or take it off, which then can draw attention to you from law enforcement.
Could they do something to the cameras?
Uh, I, I probably, I don't know if I should turn it over to Kristen or not, but I, the cameras are at a height that. Um, they're not really readily accessible to.
Okay.
Somebody unless they have a boom truck.
We would see them on a ladder, is what you're saying.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
But I have a question on the technology. You said it's stored for thirty days. Let's say you got a license plate that was red fifteen days ago, and then you gotta report a crime with that vehicle. And you said that sometimes there could be a misread of the license plate. Can you see, go back to the log and see the picture of the license plate to try to verify? Oh, maybe that's not the right license plate or?
Kristen, I, I'm gonna answer and say yes. Could you speak up to that?
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, my name is Kristen McLeod. I'm a community engagement manager with Flock Safety. Uh, thank you, Chief, for that excellent presentation of the information. As far as the data um collection, so Chief is correct, it's stored for thirty days. Each individual image is given a time to live stamp, if you will. And once the image hits that thirty day mark, it's hard deleted and unrecoverable at that point. So in that instance, if officers were to search the system as part of the criminal investigation to locate that. Um, that vehicle in question, that plate in question, they would be able to do so, to be able to um. You know, look at those vehicle characteristics, look at that plate capture, um, and, and. Um, and, and, and be able to very likely see that clearly. Kind of the, what we share is if you can see that license plate, um, clearly our camera will capture it clearly.
So they would not be able to recover that after thirty days, is what you're saying?
Correct. Each image is hard deleted at that thirty-day mark and there's no way to recover it. So um, in the event, you know, a crime, a crime occurs and, and officers are looking and it's day thirty-one, unfortunately, that information won't be there. We do offer extended data retention, um, but that would have to be approved by a governing body such as yourselves um, and comes with extra cost.
That would have actually helped Chief at that time that I was accused of running into a truck in that tunnel. Correct me, Minda?
Yeah, you weren't there. I was there.
It was not me.
No, it was not.
It's a long story, but I'll, I'll make a real, just tell the reason.
The license plate, whether it was provided to us, happened to, to, to match your license plate, but it wasn't you.
What?
Something like that.
No, it was matched my car.
Oh, matched.
So long story short, I was accused, I was at the gym, I was watching the, the police roll up behind my little tiny Corolla, this big, my car. And I, the cut, the, he, he's calling me. I'm like, my God, the police are at my car calling. I'm like, oh, what's going on? He's like, well, your car was just involved in an accident. I was like, I'm, I was in my car. He was like, yeah, you're in the tunnel. You hit like an F fifty, F one fifty. I was like, if my car hit an F one fifty, I would be dead, number one. He goes, well, there's scratches on your bumper. And I was like, my bumper, isn't going to hit an F one fifty's bumper. Let's do the math, like, I, poor cop. Anyway, my license plate would have been validated at that point in time. I did not drive into this, I was not in the tunnels. So it would have helped. And then this person.
Yes.
Seems a little defensive.
I think, yeah, well, I was extremely defensive. I was so peeing.
Hey, uh, Paul, thank you for your patience.
No worries. So this information that our Flock cameras capture goes to a database that other Flock cameras are capturing as well. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, oh, go ahead, Chief. So um, all of the data that I, should back up a little bit. First, um, something that Flock very much believes in is that all of that data is one hundred percent owned by the city and by the department. And so once it is captured, it is stored, um, it's encrypted end to end and then stored, excuse me, in the Amazon Web Services cloud.
Uh.
No, that's.
That, that doesn't make.
This goes to the question of, uh, okay, so we put policies in place that, that's, that's limited access to or, you know, how a person can uh gain access to this information. Um, are other agencies or organizations, do they have the ability to uh, to access our information?
Great question. So since the agency, the city owns your data, that means you are also in a hundred percent control of which other law enforcement agencies you choose to share your data with. Um, we make that very easy to do for Chief and the administrators of the system in the Flock platform. So many times, law enforcement will choose to share regionally, um, which you all have a, a Jefferson County is a customer, Colorado State Parks, uh, Grand County, Denver, Arbeida. So you can choose to share regionally. You can also choose to share statewide. And some law enforcement agencies also choose to share nationwide, which that collaborative policing, being able to break down those information silos can be very beneficial when working cases. However, again, that is one hundred percent up to your city, your department, um, whatever works best for your community.
Chief, I would share.
I would, I would recommend that we would start off like regionally. Um, I, you know, one of the things that even Governor Polis has mentioned is that it's, it's kind of an embarrassment that Colorado continues to lead the United States of America in stolen cars.
Yeah.
And I know that uh, the governor, one of the priorities of um, the Colorado State Patrol uh, and, and even CBI is to, is to address that issue, uh, which, you know, goes to show about the recent dismantling of an organization that was stealing cars in Colorado and then taking these all to Mexico. Um, uh, so so I, I think there's a lot of value in, in sharing the information regionally because we have an interstate here. Uh, it, it's, it's a little bit different, uh, you know, i- if, if, I guess if you're a large, large jurisdiction geographically, but that's what I would recommend. I think that the value, you know, when I look at some of the crimes that have been uh solved or that we've been able to solve with some of these groups that have, have done some of the crimes that I've mentioned to you, like the gas station, they don't, they're not local. I mean, these people are not local people. They're, they're coming from different parts, typically in Colorado, whether it be the, the metro area or other, other parts of, of Colorado. So that's what I would recommend, because that seems like a reasonable, um, a reasonable approach.
I would agree with that. I would even be able to stay with it.
Sure.
Um, you know that I have oppositions to this, but I would be willing to support this. Um, we probably have already voted on it. I just wasn't at the meeting. Um, as long as we do, I would like to see an audit. It suggests in here that we do an audit. I would like to see a yearly audit for this, to see how this is working, you know, see what you have encountered as far as the ability to solve cases, what problems you've encountered. Because I, I'm, I'm one of those people, you know, while I may fall off the left of the political spectrum, I also feel like we are way too over, over scrutinized as far as our just daily lives. And I worry about that. I worry about how much data is captured almost. So I would like to see that audit. And I, I, that, and I apologize. I know that adds more to your workload.
Right.
You know, but I don't feel bad when I see that it also recognizes that within their um operating procedures.
Right. Well, one of the things we do plan on doing, similar to what uh, to what Denver uh currently does, is there's a forward-facing piece that, that shows, I believe it's the number of vehicles that have been run, the number of vehicles where there's been an alert or a hit. So that information's out there. And certainly, um, audits, I can, I can provide an audit, you know, annual like audit report. I would think that it might be a good place to live, like in our annual report.
That would be fine.
Sure.
Which I think is, you know, trying to be as open and transparent about everything that we're doing, whether, you know, whether it's good, whether it's the number of planes that we have, um, things about uh, like racial data. Oh, as far as us enforcing the law or uh, use of force. So you, you know, that's a lot of things in our annual report. So I think that, that this definitely can live in that, in that realm.
Lisa, you know what else I like about that? We can see what kind of bank for.
Exactly. Yeah, whether it's worth the money.
Whether it's worth the money, if it's six thousand a year, it's gonna cost you a lot more for twenty-four-hour surveillance with an officer. So from a financial standpoint, that makes sense to me. Like I said, I have my concerns and they're not gonna go away.
Sure.
But I can support it because I do think there are positives. It's just, I would like to see guardrails so that both myself and the public that will have challenges with this can be assured that it's not going to be abused.
Sure. One of the things that we do too is we, we put our entire policy manual is on our webpage. So when, when you are awake at night, can't sleep, it's a five hundred and thirty-page manual. And there's certainly a section that deals with license plate reader, readers. So so that's open. I mean, it's, it's, the entire manual is, is out there for everybody to see. It's all public information anyway. So I think that might be a benefit too, that people, if, if they wanna know, they can certainly see what's allowed and what's not allowed and, and what those policies are.
All right. Any uh, any further questions?
I can totally understand. We don't wanna overstep. We don't wanna put in effect something that's overstepping, you know, authority and putting people in charge of something that doesn't work and used in the wrong way. I think the technology in today's world has a huge advantage in finding criminals in a way that we didn't have in the past. And if, if we can use this in a useful way to stop a couple of these cases, the hotel thing they mentioned, you know, if we can put that guy away, I'm, I'm all for it, you know?
Sure.
Scott, if I could pile on, you know, uh, we didn't always have fingerprint technology. And I'm sure there were people that felt that that was a real invasion of, of privacy. And yet, we don't debate it. If you're arrested, you're gonna have your fingerprints taken. And it may come back that you're associated with several other crimes. And in more recent times, we didn't have DNA uh testing. But now, you know, we're, we're even solving uh, solving a home case, cases from forty years ago or something, you know, so. Uh, that's why I, I was, I was asking Chief about the license plate reading that we currently have, even with our, with our city vehicles. So this is just uh more technology. And like Chief was saying, he feels like he's got officers twenty-four hours a day on a couple of our busier uh exits. So Lisa, I appreciate that. And I think uh, I, 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 I think that's a very reasonable request. And again, I think that we'll be able to, to judge. My guess is uh, there will be some substantial uh things that were solved, because we had the, this in place.
I hope so.
And uh, but we can uh guard against any abuses, because uh, there will certainly be people that, that will be concerned uh that the current license plate reading technology that we have currently, uh, or that the Flock system, uh, you know, would, would be abused. And we can assure uh, looking at that on a, on a yearly basis if that's not the case.
Yeah, definitely. But you should get out ahead of this, though, by letting people know on your Facebook page
True.
and ours, that we're gonna be doing this.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Yeah, I, I didn't think about that, but I would absolutely.
I think taking people by surprise and having them find out the hard way.
Can I ask one more question?
Oh, sure.
For following up.
Yeah.
Um, our database and uh, I, I can see releasing information to the database where, where there's a criminal investigation, where we have uh, you know, stolen license plate that's uh, that's a hit that, you know, that's broadcast. But um, what are the safeguards of releasing information that may not have any uh criminal investigation, you know? Uh, there may be a, a CBI agent that's trying to track his ex-girlfriend or for, for just his own personal reasons. But he has the ability to log into the system and, and abuse it. So what are our safeguards on releasing that information? From my understanding, I don't need to over-speak on, on Kristen, but from my understanding, our audit would, would actually uncover something that, of that nature if there's an outside agency that's, that's looking at something. Um, pardon me if I'm wrong, Kristen, but would I, would we be aware of that?
So you're, you're exactly right. Any, if you choose to share with a neighboring agency, they are also required to enter in that search reason. And so while your administrators are conducting their audits, misuse would be easily identifiable. Um, you know, an incomplete entry, et cetera, that follow-up would certainly uncover that misuse quickly. And the audit um is retained indefinitely. And again, will capture any um, any search for information conducted internally by your department as well as the external users that you've granted access to, to your data.
Well, following up on that, thank you, Paul. Following up on Paul's question, how often, does there an internal audit um process that happens like every month? Because using Paul's example, somebody searching their ex-girlfriend, if we only do a yearly audit, does that only show up in the year? Do we have that show up every month? Like, who, here's who searched for what this month?
Well, we're, we, we will do that. So it's, it's, it's agency by agency. We do a, a current, we do a, a monthly
Okay.
inspection, is what we call it. And so the sergeants do basically that with the officers, and then I do the same thing with the sergeants. So um, um, I guess outside of, I guess, Kristen, misuse by me, which would not be, that'd be bad. Uh, that's, that's the way that works. So we do it monthly, just because uh, we're already doing a monthly inspection.
Okay.
So that, that would be written into our policy.
And as far as getting out ahead of this, I think uh, we probably could post that uh, and this is provided council approves, that we uh have subscribed to the Flock system to complement our existing uh, we just go along with our existing license plate reading technology. Because I think there's probably a lot of people in the community that don't know we already have.
I mean, you kind of assume that when a police officer's behind you, he's running your place. That's right. I always assume that.
I do.
Every time.
Officer exists.
Don't stop me. I haven't had a ticket in thirty years.
I have a quick question. If, if you have an alert on a vehicle that comes into our town, it's, it comes up that it's got criminal, criminal activity for whatever reason. An officer on duty gets an automatic alert at that point, like immediately?
That's what I understand.
She's not, Kristen's not in there.
And then if, if that seems to be a misread, you would have to somehow verify that, right?
That's, that's right. So the officer would, would be alerted to that and then they would go to the area. Being that we're such a small geographic community, it's, it's interesting when we have people actually looking for it. We could pretty much search the entire city within, I don't know, ten, fifteen minutes. Literally, you're hitting like almost every street, the side street. Uh, we usually start with the usual places along Colorado Boulevard and then, and some of the parking lots and hotels. But yes, they, if they found what they believed to be that alert, they would still need to confirm that information through our dispatch center, what they're seeing to make sure that there isn't a mistake between a B and.
Obviously, you're gonna match that plate with the type of vehicle, the color of the vehicle.
Correct.
And if it doesn't match, you're gonna say, well, it's probably a misread then.
Yes. I have an example. I have an example of a misread that we find kind of humorous.
Ah.
Paul. So Paul's city vehicle, his license plate somehow tied to a hit in another state. I don't know which state it is. It's another state, Georgia, wherever. And so the officers drive by Paul, they get this alert on their, their in-car ca, their in-car systems. And they're like, oh, it's him. So we know that it's not him because it's not the, it's not the correct state. So that's an example of that.
Very good. So, all right. See?
I just wanna mention to council that if you guys do pass this and decide to go forward, we do have two scheduled community conversation meetings coming up in April, that if Chief wanted to come and share about this, because we're very well attended from both the business and the residents. So we have two of those, both in East and, and in downtown.
Roger Williams.
Um, for April. So if that's something you guys want to add to that um agenda, I would be happy to support that as well.
What do you think the role that would be, Chief?
Uh, from my understanding, uh, just with uh, how busy they are and with these, I, I think they were looking at not till like June.
That's perfect then.
Yeah, there would, it's gonna take, it's gonna take a little bit of time. I'm sorry.
Would you feel comfortable doing one of those, Community?
Sure.
Okay.
You know, as council members, we implement this, put it in play, and we find that there are some, definitely things we don't like about it. We can always get rid of it.
Of course. And again, I, I honestly, the eight, whatever the people with the rifles were walking around town, it would have been nice to know that that was happening. And that it was, that we knew that they were here sooner rather than later. But, I mean, you know, we're vulnerable beaches because we're up by seventy. So to me, it doesn't matter to me so much, but it will matter to people that, you know, that never.
Paul, sorry. Well, I'm just here. Um, does the alert system work retroactively? So um, say several hours down the road, you, you've now put in an Amber Alert. Would other Flock systems report that that's uh, that license plate or a license plate, something of that uh, had been through uh their jurisdiction or uh, is there any kind of flag for that?
In the thirty days?
So that, um, that can all be configured in the sharing. Um, so Chief can determine whether or not, what types of alerts he'd like to receive. Um, so if uh, let's say Denver PD creates an alert for, um, you know, a, a silver alert, Chief can elect, if you're sharing that information with each other, Chief can elect to have um, the officers receive that alert from Denver PD. Um, he can also, you know, if there's things that he doesn't necessarily wanna be alerted to, um, certain types of warrants, he can silence that alert. So it's really customizable for each agency. And each customer is in a hundred percent control of their data. So again, it would be up to um, the other law enforcement agency that Chief is seeking to get information from to approve that and vice versa.
All right. There's some questions, Paul. Thank you. Um, any uh further questions?
All right, Chief. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, Kristen, over at Flock, thank you for being with us this evening. And uh, I think this was very informative.
Thank you so much. And if there are any questions that come up in the interim or for your, from your constituents, we are more than happy to provide that information and work through Chief and answer all those. And um, again, help mitigate any concerns and address those concerns. You so much for your.
Thank you. Good night. All right, last up is the managed parking, and it says managed parking update. I I just wanted to bring up, and it's rehashing some old history, but enough years have gone by. I think it's important that I I reiterate this. There were some people, downtown business owners, that were thinking that the city just upscoundles with the parking money. And we just spend it, you know, on lighting or payroll or whatever we want. And I'd take this trip down memory lane because we actually had a really bad situation and a lot of abuse when we did not have a managed parking system. We would have meetup.org, three or four people, leaked vehicles in the main parking lot, do skiing all day and and, you know, just have fun with each other or riding their bikes and just leave the cars in the spots all day downtown. And what we noticed when we initiated the managed parking system is that sales immediately went up because the spaces were turning over. And I'm not going to say that abuse doesn't occur, but if it does, you're you're going to pay for it. You know, you're going to have a hefty.
Especially cheaper for you.
Just pay the ticket then rather than park it.
Or not even pay, just pay the hours or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, go parks. Go where you're going.
And and then I I think council knows because we go with this in in the budget. But the parking is its own enterprise. So like water, it it doesn't leave that issue. And we have to use that money for, well. Well, it can be downtown improvements and but the 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 main thrust and where this money goes is to solve the problem. And I would just remind council there was no time, and not that this was a bad idea, but we were looking at having a special assessment against downtown property owners to build the the parking structure. This was not popular with everybody. And a lot of folks felt it was very unfair. So we have this other system that we now do where all of the money is sequestered, so in count. And that money will go to solve the parking problem long term because we all know we need to solve it. I I haven't met any downtown owner that won't admit we need additional parking. They just didn't want an extra fee or tax bill, if you will, on their property. So it's a very fair approach where the people that need the parking, visitors, are paying to solve the the problem. So I'm just saying that there is a means to the end here. And I I just wanted to bring it up because as Sadie was indicating, there were three rumors that I had to dispel at our last meeting that we had over at Tommyknocker. It's very well intended, by the way. And one of the three rumors that I had to dispel was that the city just upscoundles with the money, you know, like some kind of a select.
It was that way.
You know, so anyways, because we have some people that might not have been on council at the time or, you know, they had just forgot, but but I I just wanted to bring it up. And folks that may be watching this at home or view it later know that that's the sport with the parking.
Well, and the thing that I always hear is I don't want to pay to park. And I always try to tell people, if you live in the county, you don't pay to park.
Right.
We don't penalize the people that live in this county that would like to come here. I don't know why that that doesn't seem to stick, but you don't pay to park here.
Right.
And if you get a ticket.
Just call if somebody.
Call the parking authority, but also, were you parking in the right area? Because there are areas that we're supposed to park in. I don't, I actually think our parking is good.
Well, and there's a lot of people.
How am I allowed? Yeah.
I've heard that from. For the last eight years.
From county members, they don't want to come down to Springs to pay to park. It's like if you live in the county, you don't have.
You don't pay.
And honestly, it's just that they absolutely do not want to go and register their.
Yeah, which is so much about ninety per.
It's one hundred percent.
Ninety percent of the ticket mitigations that I get contacted about both business owners and county and in city resident are people that have not registered their vehicle and count on me and John Kane in the past and Ashley to just dispute it for them. And again, interstate is great and they will then say and register the ticket, register the plate for them after.
Which is way more than.
And you wonder why I was asking about the flock thing because people don't even want to register so they don't get, you know, hit with a ticket. We we have a.
We're registering automatically now.
So one thing that on that, we've had this around long enough that you have to re-register every two years, isn't it?
Two years.
So you're not getting a notice for that.
I know, that isn't.
So it's easy, that's a.
And that is one of the things I did have a complaint with with the the company is that they were notifying you that you need to redo it.
If there's some way.
I have never redone it ever. So I don't know if they just figured out that my car does not get.
Oh, I agree with that.
Can I confess to I've never redone it?
I have not. I registered once and that was the last time.
Well, I just recently had to re-register mine.
I just read that.
I have a very.
Because I got a ticket. That was my.
And that was your alarm.
So residents versus businesses are different. So residents, it's it's not every two years. We extended that to a five-year resident renewal. So residents are a five-year, businesses are on two-year renewals. So that's where that difference comes.
For employees, right?
And business owners ourselves. So like, like you and me as a business owner.
Employees are six months.
We actually did extend that right now, but there is actually not super much of a time limit on employees.
Oh, all right.
Because we got a lot of kickback from the business managers about how much, especially places like Bojoes and Tommyknockers, how much time they were having to spend in the parking portal registering things. So right now, we don't really have like a great like time period or grasp on that. Ashley and I have gone back and forth. Right now, it's honestly pretty like.
Easy guzy.
Pretty much by like when the employer gets in to manage, that's when it happens. I have, the big employers are pretty good at it. They're going in, I think, every couple of months and updating and auditing. That, however, that is not currently being managed.
All right, thank you. So before we take a break, we can meet in a regular meeting at seven. Any any questions about parking?
That's good, very informative.
Okay, all right. Well, thanks a lot, everybody. It is six fifty-four. I'll see you back here at seven. Cool. Good to go. All right, thank you. Paul, I'd like to welcome everybody to the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting for the city of Idaho Springs called order at seven P M. And well, I'd like to start off with a roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Here.
Janine Mariani. Kate Collier. Here. Jim Clark. Lisa Manifold. Here. Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Here.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Here. Paul, please rise from the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. We have an agenda before us tonight. Do I have a motion?
I'm going to approve the agenda for January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Scott. Any discussion of the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Does anyone tonight feel they have a conflict of interest? All right, hearing none. Now we'll move to approval of the minutes from December ninth. Do I have a motion?
Do you motion approve the minutes from December ninth, twenty twenty-four?
Thank you, Jeremy. And do I have a second? A second from Kate? All right, any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? We're going to have two motions or approvals of bills tonight. The first one for the December bills, do I have a motion?
I'm going to approve bills from December tenth, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Kate. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Lisa. And any discussion of the bills? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Jim Clark. Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And then moving to the second approval, which would be our bills to January thirteenth. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved to, I'm second.
I said I'm moved to approve the bills to January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Lisa. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Jeremy. Any discussion of those bills? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. All right, moving to a public comment. Do we have anyone signed up or?
Mayor, I hate to stop this.
Sure.
I looked through the bills earlier and I didn't see one for my car wash, but I was looking at obviously in the December bills, there's one in the January bills.
Oh. Oh, and you wanted to recuse yourself.
I want to recuse myself from the vote.
Through January thirteenth.
Yeah.
Scott, I appreciate.
I'm sorry I didn't see that earlier. I didn't realize there was two financial reports.
And I appreciate that. I actually did see that in the bills. And since it was a unanimous vote, there there would be no reason for of of recasting the votes. But but duly noted, thank you. And now to a public comment. Do we have anyone online? No one signed up over here. And and we have none online?
I don't have anyone online.
Thank you, Dylan. All right. I I assume we we don't have our finance officer with us tonight? No. Okay. Then we'll move to resolutions and we have several of them, starting with number one. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved to approve resolution number one, series twenty twenty-five, a resolution designating the public place for posting a notice of regular and special meetings of local public bodies of the city of Idaho Springs.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A second from Jeremy. And any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Next up, resolution number two. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution number two, series twenty twenty-five, a resolution repealing the existing three-mile area plan and adopting a new twenty twenty-five three-mile area plan for the city of Idaho Springs.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. And I'm sorry, Kate, did you second?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion on the resolution? I would just like to thank Dylan for a lot of work on this. Made it very, very understandable for everybody. And there's no further questions. I will move to roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Next up, resolution number three. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, resolution number three, series two thousand twenty-five, a resolution adopting an updated and amended city of Idaho Springs fee schedule.
Thank you, Scott. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second from Kate. And any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Next up, resolution number four, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve, approve resolution number four, series two thousand twenty five. A resolution approving a master services agreement with Flock Incorporated for our license plate detection and related services.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Scott. And any discussion?
Go to the block, Lynn, do you have anything you want to add to it?
Oh, I thought we, I would like to add that we have a yearly audit, you know, of the outcome.
I believe that we had discussed that in work session when she had consented, so duly noted. And I think that that was something that we look forward to and. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Next up, resolution number five.
I'm making motion, resolution number five, series two thousand twenty five. A resolution designating a temporary handicapped parking space at three twenty five Fourteenth Avenue, sixty eight feet north of Virginia Street on the east side.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Kate. Any discussion?
December and ninety day, I can't remember.
Oh, it's a one year.
One year.
They don't anticipate being in the residence that long, but the person that needs this, he does have a physical disability.
Okay.
And Paul, thank you for looking into this.
So if that happens, it's temporary for a year and that person happens to move, is there a way to return this back to normal or how does that?
They just pull the sign, right?
We could actually just pull the sign, honestly. The resolution would still exist if somebody made one, as we would put it back.
Yeah.
But it would only be for that, the remainder of that one year period.
Okay.
All right, very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And last up on the resolutions, number six, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution number six, series twenty twenty five. A resolution supporting the formation of a regional resilience team to support, advise, and lead economic development initiatives in Clear Creek and Gilpin Counties.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Lisa. And any discussion? Again, I would like to thank Lindsay for all the work on this. And there's, there's no more comments, I would ask for a roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Next up, we are looking at ordinance first reading, starting with ordinance number one. And do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number one, series twenty five, in ordinance amending rates and charges for water and sewer service and making conforming the name of Seattle Springs municipal.
Thank you, Jeremy. And do I have a second?
A second.
And I'm sorry, was that Kate? Okay. And any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones. Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And last of the ordinances, number three, do I have a motion?
Make a motion, ordinance number three, series two thousand twenty five, in ordinance approving an extension of the term of the current franchise agreement with Public Service Company of Colorado to permit the finalization of a new agreement and declaring an emergency with respect thereto.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A second from Jeremy. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. We don't have any ordinance second reading tonight. Next up is City Attorney Carmen, welcome. Nice to have you with us. Did you have anything for us tonight?
No, thank you, Mayor and Council. Thanks for adopting ordinance number three. That will permit us to finalize the Excel franchise agreement, just so you know. And the public knows we don't anticipate any issues there. That ordinance just bought us an additional little bit of time so that we could get that done. I anticipate you will see that franchise agreement and the ordinance approving that probably at your February slash March meetings to become effective in April. So thank you for passing that. Other than that, I've got nothing for you other than Happy New Year.
Yes, thank you. Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have a city administrator. Andy, thank you for.
May I have a question on the franchise agreement thing?
Yeah.
I don't know if this has anything to do with the franchise, but we were having trouble with them responding. Did we send some of the full lighting or we didn't get resolution with them?
I'm going to ask Paul and Andy, because I know Paul had done superhuman efforts to try to get some of these things moved up on their priority list. Paul, did we get satisfaction on the streetlights that had been out for some time?
Yes, but we've also had some go out since then. I've made a report of a couple of them on their, their online forum where we're supposed to, where we're supposed to report the, the streetlights. You know, I saw that light at Thirteenth Colorado. That has not been addressed at all. The whole poll's down. And there's, there's just been no contact between Excel and us. I can, I've, I've only reported it twice. I don't know where to go, you know, the, the contact persons change so frequently with Excel. And I think that should always be part of a franchise agreement is that we have, we have a, a person that the city can contact about these things.
Right. And Paul, would it be accurate to say that it is common for these to go months?
It is. It is. And I, I can understand, you know, we have the high winds where, you know, their, their linemen, their push and allergy and other things. You know, I agree with that, these things can take some time to, to get done. We are not the high priority, and a streetlight is not a high priority. But we don't, we don't receive any kind of feedback on, on, you know, an anticipated schedule, anything of that nature either.
Well, in that being said, I wouldn't mind if they said it's going to be three months from now if they communicated with you.
It, that's the, that's the whole thing. We don't even receive any sort of receipt that they have received this complaint. And that would go to, you know, a long way in trying to, to track down and resolve some of these issues.
Carmen, is that something they?
Carmen can help this.
So is that something that can be part of the agreement, like we need better communication or we need an account executive who handles our complaints?
You know, heard, and I understand that frustration. You know, the franchise agreement really governs and addresses their occupation of our rights away and, and the fee they owe us for that. However, we are having discussions with, you know, real life human beings who are, who have a vested interest in, in us paying attention to them right now. So I will absolutely make it a point to address that, whether it gets rolled into the agreement or not, I don't know. But I'm happy to convey mayor, council staff, the community's frustration with the lack of communication on that part. So I will address that with them. We will address that. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for raising it.
All right. And Andy has three requests for action. And I'd like to start off with number one, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the H D R, H D R Engineering as the consultant for the design of downtown, the downtown mobility hub program based on the results of our request for qualifications RFQ process.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second? A second from Jeremy. And any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Next up, number two, or rather, the city administrator's second request for action. Do I have a motion?
I'm motion to approve task order one from H D R Engineering in the amount of one million thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy two for the first phase of design, fifteen percent for the downtown mobility hub program.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Kate. And any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And last one for Andy, number three, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve task order two from H D R Engineering in the amount of forty two thousand sixty three dollars for assistance preparing the raised capital grant application for the downtown mobility hub program.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Jeremy. And any discussion?
Is this, is this going to be, going to give us enough time to get this grant together? When, is that the one that's due in April?
No, this grant is due the end of this month. In fact, the, the grant application deadline moved up a month, almost a few months back when the notice of funding opportunity.
That's right, you said, okay.
So we've had to scramble. H D R Cho Nguyen from H D R is online, just in case you had any questions. But H D R has done a great job in stepping up the process of doing the cost benefit analysis, which is required and takes some time, and then also working together with the team to get this application completed by the deadline this month.
Any further questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And next up, we have the assistant city administrator, Guy, thank you for your report. And Guy has two requests for action. And for number one, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve and grant for services between the city of Idaho Springs and the city of Schultz and any, any contractor to perform the functions of director of business in community promotion board, V C P B, and for the city of Idaho Springs for total amount not to exceed sixty six thousand dollars.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Scott. And any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And next up, number two, second item from Guy, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve city staff applying for a tourism management grant through the Colorado Tourism Office with a maximum city match amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Lisa. And any discussion? Hearing none, and roll call, please.
Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Let's see here. Dylan, I wanted to thank you for getting us nine hundred and seventy five dollar grant. You did put that in for the saving places, wasn't, wasn't that you?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, good job. We're looking forward to attending that. And Wonder, your next up, no request for action, but thank you for your report. We did have, and this is gleaned from Wonder's report, we did have a reduction, as I was talking about earlier, of one and a half, it's one point five seven percent. And again, I, I am a little concerned, we don't have the bike park up and running right now. So my guess is that it may, it may grow from here because our, our statistics lag behind two months.
That was a monthly report, right? One and a half percent with the yearly running at?
Uh.
Just about even.
Well, just because we started the.
Oh, this is the first one?
Just one and a half percent.
So last year we were about even?
You know what? It's debatable. We were up about two point three six percent, and I'm saying that that is very close to the officially recognized. I know we don't feel that way when we go to the grocery store, but it's close to officially recognized. It was pretty darn, pretty darn close to a wash, just keeping in mind that the year before was our all time record. So we, we, we'd probably be pretty happy to tie that.
Is this, is this a spot where I can ask about the park really quick?
I'll tell you what, let me, let me bring that up under Mayor and Council. And Wonder, we have a new person helping out at city hall.
We do. Yeah, she's been here a week.
And all right, yeah, it was a week. And I think many of you may already know Scott Lubensky. And this is his wife, Moria. And she has extensive experience. So we're bringing her up to speed here at city hall, and I think she's going to be a great addition. So, and Wonder, thank you. Anything further to share with us tonight?
No matter.
Okay. All right. Next up, Chief just wanted to bring up this, this flock camera and see if we have a motion on the chief's one item here.
Mayor, I, I think, because, do they need to do that motion? Because they already did the resolution. Andy and I didn't connect.
Oh, thank you, chief.
Yes. I think that.
No, that would be redundant.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I thought.
Uh, thank you. But I just want to say thank you for your report.
Sure.
Boys, I'm never a dull moment. I'm just thinking of the, the incredible plow truck drivers that I, I don't think any of us would have imagined would have been helping out in that. But I just wanted to see if you had anything further to share with us.
You know, it's, it's interesting, Mayor, I'll just, real quick, we, we just found out this afternoon that that actually was shared on a national television, television show, Law Patrol Live. So that's kind of interesting. And as of last week, we had looked just to see on our, like, the number of views, and it was, on the video, it was more than three hundred and fifty thousand views of that.
Wow, three hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah. I thought that was pretty fascinating.
Jeez.
I'm definitely.
I didn't even know there was a deal.
We do plan to recognize those plow, plow drivers in our next awards.
Excellent.
Don't we make money if you have a bunch of views on YouTube or something like that?
We need to monetize. I'll help with that. Monetize it.
If nothing else, it is really helping our standing.
Can we give our police an YouTube channel so that people can watch it?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
We'll integrate. We'll integrate the platforms.
All right.
That's fine.
All right, very good. Thank you. Public Works, thank you for the report. Paul, just want to make sure you didn't have anything further to share with us tonight.
I do not, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next up, Ed, thank you for your report. Wanted to see if you had anything further for us tonight?
No, thank you. I, I don't have anything else to just say.
All right. Next up, under Mayor and Council, I had already covered the, the parking, fortunately, in the working session. But the bike park has been quite a topic of discussion. Kate, I know you would, you would like to, to discuss.
So I, I guess I'm confused when the, when the approval for the bike park went in, there was an environmental assessment done at that time, am I correct? Doesn't, don't, don't they make an environmental assessment, like, okay, the bike park's going in, this is going to be the interaction with bikers and wildlife?
I wouldn't call it an environmental assessment. We coordinated with Colorado Parks and Wildlife ever since, you know, since the beginning, so through the master planning process and through all the trail building. So we communicate with them regularly.
Right. So the gondola is being built as we speak, and there's people on the trail, despite the fact that the trails are closed and the interaction with animals is the concern. I guess my, my question is, why are there still people on the trails, number one? Number two, are the gondolas going to be running through the winter months when there could be interference with animals? Obviously, the gondolas are not on the ground, but there is noise involved. There will be people at the top of the mountain, I would assume.
And Kate, I just want you to know that we specifically made the sign that it was closed to the public, but we, we were going to continue with the trail building, and actually, that was with the blessing of CPW.
And I, and I'm aware of that. It just, like so many things with this particular park, it definitely seems like there's this bait and switch situation where my understanding was, just in this room, not too many months ago, when I was talking about the volume of bikers in town on the trails taking up parking, it was said out loud that, don't worry, they'll be gone soon, and then locals could have the trails back. And so the locals are waiting for the trails to come back, and now they're closed. So we were talking about how it was going to calm down, everything would be, you know, like, open for biker, uh, walk, uh, hikers rather than bikers, because they'll be snowy up there. So it just seems like that changed just within the last couple of weeks. And I'm just curious what the, and then when the.
I, I, if I may, let me address that. Um, it did change. And what changed is, uh, we meet regularly with CP.W. and they asked to meet with us in December, the, the Rangers. And assess operations and also talk about whether, you know, you know, there needed to be a seasonal closure. And, uh, the outcome of that meeting was the, for this year, they asked, the Rangers asked that there be a seasonal closure from January through March. So that's the reason for the, the change. And what you heard earlier is that we didn't know what that closure, if any, would look like. And then once we had that meeting with the, the Rangers, that's what they requested. So the city agreed to that for this year.
And, and by the way, when Andy says for this year, because we have had discussions where depending on the severity of the year, it may or may not happen.
But it might not close?
It may not. Yeah, this is, in, in talks with CPW. And actually, like right now, when you think about it, the disturbances on the trails are nothing compared to the many tons of explosives that we've got going off on the, uh, the young quarry.
Oh, I know, that's what I'm talking about. So all this is still going on. So it sort of seems counterintuitive to like not disturbing the, the wildlife.
And, and then we have, for the next four years, we have all the explosives and moving over the mountain with, uh, Floyd Hill and expansion of, uh, of the Fry pit. So I'm just saying that, uh, there's a lot, uh, and depending on like what, maybe some radio collar data will show CPW. Uh, and, uh, we've also committed to getting some additional trail cameras up. Um, but depending on what that data shows, I wouldn't be surprised to see if bighorn sheep aren't going further north uh, up in the, uh, Ghost Town area and avoiding this explosive, uh, stuff altogether. That's just a hunch.
We'll see them in our backyard or we won't see them in our backyard. It's basically when it's going to come down.
Yeah, plenty of times, year by year. Has it been a little less than last year?
Not sure. They were all over the place, yeah.
Well, but does that answer the question though? Does, like, was the understanding that there would be a closure to the public so that hikers and locals have that?
Like Andy said, that definitely changed. And then, the, in the future, is the gondola going to be running through the winter? Is that part of the plan and the pavilion up top would, would be going on? Because that, of course, is going to create disturbances as well. People are going to walk down that trail.
Yeah, they had always intended on a year-round operation.
Again, I, it's just the inconsistencies of this development and it's very fluid.
When we met with the Rangers, uh, we, we had a very frank conversation with them because really the information that they're basing their decisions on is that is a, is a 20, 25-year-old report about the, uh, winter half, you know, winter migration of the bighorn sheep. And we really need to have, we believe, to make good decisions, we need to have better data. You need to have the collar data, data that's on the, um, some of the sheep or, um, actual, um, uh,
Trail cams?
Yeah, trail cams. So, and, and CPW, uh, apparently doesn't have any, uh, current data that they either have or, or can share. And so we're going to track some of that information. We just purchased cameras today. And we're working with COMBA to get those located in key locations. And that's both to monitor, uh, wildlife, but also to monitor people. And if there are bad actors out there who are disregarding the closure or, you know, whether riding bike or, or walking, you know, that, that will be addressed. So, um, we're trying, we're doing what we can as a city to gather some data. And again, we'll continue to work with CPW and share that information and see what actually makes sense. Does it, to us, does a, does an arbitrary, uh, closure of three months of the, of the park to all, all use other than construction? And they said that trail construction was okay and gondola construction's okay, but, but no users of the park. Does that really make sense? To us, it really doesn't make sense. Now, we're not wildlife managers.
Right.
You have to be respectful.
I mean, I'm just saying that as a resident that was like, kind of promised this, it absolutely does not make sense.
It caught us a bit by surprise as well, just to, just to have that, say, after this conversation, well, close it from January to March. That's really the way it came across.
Well, given the fact that we're still doing construction right there and everything else that's going on around us, like to me, I'm like, really?
This is the walker guy?
This is the thing that's going to create the challenges?
Well, and, and Lisa, if you can believe this, uh, you know, those gondola towers are going to be set by helicopter, at least one of them.
So there's like.
It doesn't even make any sense. So, I will tell you that you probably will see people up there because I pretty much have said, I don't care what you do.
Remember that the park was open. We didn't advertise it, but it was a soft opening when we built Phase One, which was a four-mile hiking trail, uh, which is also, uh, now an uphill biking trail to get to the downhill trail. That, that was open for several years without any issue. Granted, it was hikers, lower use because it was mostly.
Sure, and that's, that's kind of my.
Right.
It's been historically for years.
And I think the reason this came, this, you know, obviously we had a big impact with opening. We, we knew from COMBA, they said, this is going to be a big deal. Opening is going to be a big deal. Prepare for a crunch. People will want to experience it and then it'll start dying down as we get into the winter. And that's probably what you heard is that, okay, it's going to be less bike use, it's going to be colder.
More hiking.
And then maybe more hiking. And that, and that's, I think, where the disconnect was and, and that's unfortunate. But, um, again, the, our obligation to CPW is that we continue to work cooperatively with them. But we also feel that these decisions should be made based on good data. So we're going to do what we can to try to gather. You know, our, we went through a extensive master planning process and the trails were laid out with a lot of attention paid towards where the sheep go, congregate, you know, where is their, uh, extreme weather habitat? Uh, and we avoided those areas with the design of the trails. And that was all done in conjunction with CPW over the years. So, a lot of effort went into that, so.
That's kind of what I was referring to, is that there was absolutely connectivity with those guys when we were putting this down. And, and so here's what we're, I would suggest, and I'm saying this out loud. If there's no, if you see somebody on a trail cam and they're behaving properly, I don't think if that's a resident that they should have anything. We shouldn't make a big deal. Somebody's camping up there or living up there or, you know, having fires up there, that's a different scene altogether. But there are locals that have been using that trail well before this park ever went into effect. And to have them penalized because now there's a park there seems to be against everything that we keep talking about that this is really for the locals. That's what I'm going to say.
All right, um, any, uh, anything further? Uh, I want to let everybody know, Jimmy Clark, uh, is, uh, suffering from some type of a virus. He's very sick. Uh, I just found this out today and, uh, uh, I, in fact, I would have found, uh, those staff as to him not being here, but I just found out during our meeting, uh, from his wife. And I know we're all wishing him a speedy recovery. Uh, I would point out, we are not going to have a work session or a regular meeting uh, until January 27th. And, uh, it'll be a couple of weeks. And, uh, again, uh, I want to reiterate that as far as, uh, economic development, getting involved with economic development, I, I want to thank you for those who've expressed interest. And, uh, we're going to, uh, be reaching out, uh, as time gets closer in hopes of having, uh, a name that we can put forward at that, uh, January 27th, uh, meeting.
We should be open to some of the splitting that responsibility.
I have no problem splitting. I think it's a great idea.
Well, uh, you know, I, I think Lindsay will agree. And, and al- also, uh, full disclosure, I'm on, uh, Economic Development, uh, Board. And, uh, we, we do meet once a month, uh, so I, I can tell you, uh, from a practical sense, I think she would appreciate having at least a primary and alternate.
Sure.
Uh, that way we can assure, uh, having a, a good, uh, attendance. So, yeah, I, I think that probably is something that would be very doable. Um, and, uh, before I adjourn, I just want to make sure that nobody does anything further tonight.
Uh, City Hall will be closed on Monday.
Oh.
The 20th.
Thank you. That's an important, uh, point. Exactly. Um, and if there's, uh, nothing further, we'll call it adjourned.